A meeting of the Board of Appeals on May 15, 2018, on last month's floor. Go call.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mr. Giusano?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mrs. Curley?
Present.
Mr. Callen?
Present. We have a corral. Motion to accept minutes of the last regular meeting on May 1, 2018 meeting. Motion. Motion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. First case this evening will be 10 Minor Street. Mr. Cole, can you read your resumé?
10 Minor Street. Petitioner Anthony Marskopoulos by his attorney Samuel Vitale to allow construction of an addition to existing single-family home in zoning District R4 upon an undersized lot, 4,052 square feet, where in such addition it approaches upon minimum sided rear yard setback and exceeds the allowed lot coverage, 38.7%.
Thank you. The hearing is now open for those in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Callen. I'm Attorney Vitale. This is Anthony. I think Anthony's familiar. We've been here before with respect to 10 Minor Street. Let me just tell you what's changed. If you recall, when we were here, there was a question about the garage that was constructed. It had less than the required sideline. It had been a carport. It had been modified. It was constructed in error. The building department said, "You need to get approval because you have less than the required sideline." We came here, and we got that approval. And then the next step was, because it was required to satisfy not only the zoning code, but the state building code, so we hired Mr. Starick to do what's called a code compliance. And the result of that code compliance came down to a real Hobson's choice. It came down to either you take it down and start all over because you don't have five-star energy efficiency, you don't have the footings for it the way they should be, so there were substantial building code issues. So the other alternative that Mr. Starick recommended would be essentially to, it would be easier, in his judgment, to take it down and build it right than it would be to try to make it right the way it was built. So we had one half of the equation. And remember, the reason we wanted to get zoning relief is, and so let me just tell you, two other things that happened since we were here. We were able, because of the approval that you gave, to get financing. And we had the property conveyed from Anthony's parents to Anthony. And so he owns the property. He's now able to get financing because there wasn't a zoning violation. He applied for, and it was a story recently, last week I'd say, of Glenn Housing and Neighborhood Area Development targeting a particular area which Minor Street is one. So Anthony's got a grant from the housing authority. He qualifies for an improvement. And if you recall, we were here on the eve of his wife's giving birth, so he's had a son.
Son.
So the other change is, he's got a son, he's got another child, and so the question was, if we're coming back to get the garage done right, and you want to stay committed to the neighborhood and the housing authorities assisting by making a grant or making a loan, then he can stay in the Minor Street area. He can stay in the home that his parents deeded to him by building an addition. So that's the second reason we're here. We're here to get the approval of the addition. And as Mr. Cole read in the legal notice, the relief we seek is because of the lot coverage that results with the addition. Now, I know that I've checked with the secretary, and I know I filed, but I brought with me the plan of the structural engineer that shows the proposed addition to the home and that the garage is essentially going to be built according to what Mr. Starick recommended in terms of the building code, but it would not need further relief because we have the relief, putting it in the exact same place, but built in accordance with, I think it's now the ninth edition of the state building code.
I don't have it.
Oh, you do have it? Okay. I don't know what, does everybody else have?
Hmm.
And so, what we're hoping to do, and I would say this, one other.
Do I get one?
Excuse me?
Do I get one of those?
Oh, I'm sorry. I asked whether people didn't.
Thank you.
I brought that. I brought that. The other factor is that Counselor Capano visited the site. I talked with him previously above the site. He went down, and he spoke with Anthony with respect to what was going on and what did he want to do. And so, he's aware of the proposal. I don't believe there's any calls that he's got of people in opposition. As I say, the last question is that, and I think it's somewhat fortunate, I think I read that the new planning director of the housing authority talked about the targeting of a particular neighborhood, like they did the Gateway Neighborhood and Lower Washington Street, that now this area of the city is within their target area, and, but you can't get the improvement loan and you can't get the grant unless you do the work, and to do the work, we need your approval.
Anyone have any questions, or Mr. Vitale? Anyone here?
Okay.
Anyone else favor this petition? Anyone else favor this petition? Anyone else opposed to this? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Here and then, closer here, and those opposed, what is the wish of the board?
Make a motion to grant petition.
Motion by Mr. Wood to grant.
I'll start.
Second, Mr. Giusano. Please follow.
Mr. Wood?
Mr. Grant.
Mr. Giusano?
Mr. Grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, Grant.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, the grant. The petition has been granted by unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Next. Next one is 57 Pine Hill Ave. Mr. Cole, can you read it?
57 Pine Hill Ave. To allow subdivision of an existing lot in zoning District R2 creating one lot, Lot A, with a pre-existing residence upon an undersized lot of 6,028 square feet with insufficient frontage of 73.15 feet, and to allow construction of a single-family residence upon Lot B, 6,044 square feet with 24-foot frontage.
Thank you. The hearing is now open for those in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Callen. I'm Attorney Samuel Vitale. I represent for Janine and Jack Gazzis. Jack's brother lives in the Pine Hill area. Jackie is a snowbird, is that the term? She goes to Florida on the winters. She and Jack met. They lived in a home in that area and became familiar with Pine Hill because they lived in the brothers' home. And when this home became available, it was empty, it was foreclosed by a bank, they bid and got the property. Because it was bank-owned and they got it as foreclosure, they never got to see the inside until it was acquired. When they acquired it, they discovered that, sort of what appeared to me, but they're novices, that it had clearly been used as a two-family. Not only is there an exterior staircase on the second floor, which is unusual in a single-family, but there were two kitchens, and the layout was such that there was obviously use as a two-family dwelling. And in terms of that use, what became apparent was that, for whatever reason, somebody had used it as a two. They met with an individual in the Inspectoral Services Department and said, "We've got this building, and it's got two kitchens, it's got this other means of egress. What do we need to do?" And the individual gave them sound advice. He said, "Well, you could keep the two-family because the lot, because of the acquisition of a smaller lot that used to be over on this side, put you over 12,000 square feet, but the only people who have the authority to recognize a property and its use is the Board of Appeals." And then they asked, "Well, what about," because it was another intervening act, it was a serious automobile accident, Mr. Gazzie was injured. This building, if you come from the basement to the attic, which is finished, is four And it became difficult for him to get around in it, and they really couldn't utilize and don't utilize, and I'm going to show you photographs, the upper levels. So, based on that recommendation, they asked what did they need to do. They were told what was they needed to do, and I brought with me various sets of photographs. Let me just, as I give them to you. We marked where the kitchen is in the apartment, it's on the second floor. We marked where the kitchen is in the main house. And then there were photographs of the interior that show the layout, including the two kitchens and the bathroom that was there, and some of the empty room that was there. I provided, when I filed, with the, the history that I learned after I was contacted by these folks. And that is this, that for many years, the property was owned by the Raymond senior. Mr. Raymond and his wife owned the property. And then they deeded the property to their sons. And then, among the brothers, it was a deed from one brother to the brother and his wife. And then, the brother and his wife who owned the property separated their ways, and the wife conveyed her interest to the remaining brother. And the other brother moved next door. And so, people in the neighborhood knew the property as a two-family, and the use was accepted as such. And so, when, as I say, to me, the clue was seeing the exterior staircase. So when the, when these folks came to me, I said, "Well, the first thing we've got to determine is, you know, how it was that it came to be used as a two, and who did it? Because the board's going to be interested to know whether you put the second staircase in, whether somebody else put the staircase in, whether there are two means of egress, which there are." And so, we proceeded on the basis that we believe that the evidence would reflect that the usage of that property up until the time the bank took it over, and it was empty, was as a two-family, at least since I'd say the '70s or the '80s when the Ramones owned it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the attorney a question?
Yes.
We're basically here for the construction of a single-family residence. Are you also here to try to get that to be an approved two-family?
Yes, because Mr.-
Because that's not clear. But from what you're saying, it's very clear.
No, it isn't clear.
So there's two things, to make a single or two.
Well, it says to allow an existing residence with a pre-existing on it, okay? Because the individual who wrote the ad is the individual who met with him. I have a letter from him.
The bottom line is, this is a legal one right now. We're dealing with, the existing house is a legal one.
Well, I've got the letter from the individual in the building department who said, "I've been asked to opine," and now essentially, he said that the two-family would be a permitted use.
Yeah.
But it would need approval.
Yeah.
Okay?
Right.
That's what he said.
Yeah.
Okay. And then he said, "It was erected before," and it was erected in the early 1900s or whatever, and so it was grandfathered, but if it was altered, okay, or modified or expanded, it would need the approval of Board of Appeals.
Yeah. The doctor doesn't say anything.
So that, Mr. Vitale, the building department, I A S D, they told someone that it's legal as a two, but they need approval for us.
No. No.
Let me read it. Let me read you his letter.
How is it listed in their records?
Patriot Property has it as a one-family.
Yeah, it's listed as a one-family.
It's a one-family.
Yeah.
Legal.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But there's no permit. So go look at the streetjacket. There's an exterior staircase. There's no permit.
Yeah.
Okay?
Or for the kitchens and the bathrooms.
Right, and there's two kitchens. There's no permit.
But the advertisement clearly asks for, we're talking about a second structure on the property, not-
That's two things of being-
No, we're doing a subdivision too, allowing-
It's not advertised that way.
Again, I've given you the indication. Let me, why don't you let me read what I wrote and filed? I can only tell you that I submit, and what I wrote was the following. The glad and sure. Division of a lot in the R2 general residence district into two lots. Lot A with a pre-existing residence on the lot with less than the required lot size and frontage, and Lot B with a single-family to be constructed thereon. The reason I call it a residence, I usually call things dwellings, but every time I do, they change it to residence. If you look in the zoning ordinance, nowhere is the word residence. It says, it's either a single-family dwelling or a two-family dwelling. But I adopted, because I got tired of having my ads changed, I used the apartments. But clearly, that, and if you look at the photographs and you see what was there, that the staircase, the exterior case is there from the second floor. Why was it put there?
Because two brothers lived in the house.
No, the parents lived in the house first.
And then the two brothers.
Right, and then they deeded it to the two brothers. Then one of the brothers deeded it to the other brother and that brother's wife. And then ultimately, that brother moved next door. And then ultimately, the wife deeded her interest in the house to the next brother, and he lost it to the bank.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have another question.
So not only do you want to add another house onto this property, you want to make the
existing house a two-family as well?
I think that the existing house is a two-family.
Not legally.
No, I agree. That's why we're here.
But I disagree with you on that, because nowhere in the advertisement does it talk about turning the existing structure into a two-family, or recognizing it as a two-family.
And I think that, well, I can't speak for the individual who wrote the letter, but I think I understand why he wrote that letter.
Irregardless of who wrote what, what we have in front of us doesn't represent what you're asking for.
Yeah. It isn't, Mr. Vitale, it isn't listed as such, and I think we're going to have to straighten this out before we proceed.
Oh, I understand, but I want you to, I say this all the time, I don't make it up. I write the ads.
Yeah, I know.
I turn them in.
Yeah, it does look like an inside, and there is a staircase there, which we didn't approve because we always want them enclosed.
I know.
Coming in.
That's, to me, was the first-
It's a stairway anyway. No, and I think that maybe we should either continue this and-
And let me just say this. I like to do that for one reason, because I've lost the one thing I wanted to give you that had some significance, at least to these folks, and I owe it to them, and I'll bring it back with me, but it's in my pile. I had them go talk to people in the neighborhood, and they got a petition, and signed by people in the neighborhood.
Do you have it with you?
Yeah, I do. I got to just find it. But here's what Jackie told me once she was going to do it. What did people tell you about this?
That they recognized it as a two-family. They always considered it-
They thought it was a two-family.
Well, I mean, all appearances is, but it's the legal record in City Hall, like Mr. Cole said, it's listed as a single. So we have to deal with that. What is it legal? Not what neighbors think. It is, they could say it's illegal.
There's hundreds of these throughout the city.
All throughout the city.
Family member came in, they put it-
We want to make it legal.
So we have to do it legally. We just can't jump over the fact.
And let me tell you what I used, is the story, okay? Because I say to them that one of the things people look at is, how is it, what's what they call the land use code, and I tried to explain that to them. And the land use code is as a single-family. But do you think there are people in land that want to pay taxes on a two-family and volunteer and come down and say, "It's a two-family, tax me more"? So the Raymond family, I can recognize it, I think where Mr. Cole's going, except it ended at one point. The Raymond family, and we've had these cases, and you've had these cases before, where mom and dad buy the three-family house, and then they occupy it, and then the family grows, and then the older brother moves on the second floor, and then he gets married, so he moves up to the third floor. And as I explained to Jackie, "Well, if you're related by blood," which brothers are, or you're related by marriage, which the other brother was, then no matter how it's laid out, there's an argument that says it's a single-family. But if it walks like a duck and it talks like a duck and it's got two kitchens-
Well, Mr. Vitale, I suggest this. You move to a trial and our project, straighten the whole thing out, and we'd be glad to hear it all straightened out.
I appreciate that, but let me just say that, again, part of, most people who come to the Board of Appeals, as you know, aren't really developers. They're unfamiliar with the system. That's how I make a living. And they, well, they come to me for help, but they'll tell you, "I don't invent the evidence. I might discover it, okay? I don't make it up, all right?" And so, when I saw this, she will tell you, I said, I asked a point-blank question, I said, "Who put that staircase in? And why is it there?"
Yeah, okay, but-
So that was the clue to me.
Yeah, that was done illegally anyway.
So I am, of course, to your client. When you purchased the property, you guys, from the mortgage company, how was it advertised?
As a single-family.
Okay. All right.
So, yes.
If you guys, whatever you guys think the result's going to be, if you want to come back with us, you've got to bring drawings back for the two-family and for the draw house that you want to build.
Right.
I want to see what all they're going to look like, and I want to see them before the night of the meeting.
Yeah, right, and also, you've got to mark it out on ground. I don't even know who's marked out all this.
I mean, everything's going to be exactly-
It doesn't matter to me what you show on paper, or I won't even look at it. Yeah. What states are you there with?
Well, it don't have to be safe, but mark it on the ground.
I mean, this is a big, this is a big lift here. We're going from a single-family house with three units on one lot. That's way, that's a lot. That's a lot of density up there in that neighborhood.
You've got a 160-foot long driveway, single car length, that's half a football field you're going to back in and out of to get to that back of that property to park. I mean, it just, on paper, it doesn't-
What'd you say?
I don't care what's on-
No, 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 I was going to just say, I just want to know, you survived that. I found it, okay? But I'm not going to submit it, since if you allow us to withdraw, it has some relevance to what people told or wanting if you come back with that as a power of the court.
Yeah, no, that's-
But again, I'll try to, I will do my part to draft it more clearly. How it gets ultimately to you, I don't know.
Crystal clear, like, where you use the-
As clear as I can, I'll try. All right, thank you.
So you're going to withdraw it, or?
If the board allows me to, yes. I mean, I hear-
Can we go through the rest of the hearing?
We could.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could.
Okay. Then we-
Yeah, you can go through it the rest of the hearing.
Excuse me?
We'll go through it the rest of the-
Oh, all right, okay.
Yeah. Any comments on the board?
Why don't we go through the rest of the hearing?
Why wouldn't we?
If we withdraw with our prejudice, where's the-
We still, I mean, we opened the hearing. I think we got a complaint to hear it. I mean, that just, you know-
But why are we doing it without prejudice? Why are we just continuing?
Yeah, well-
Well, I mean, tonight's hearing, just-
Yeah, he can, he can withdraw anytime he wants.
Yeah, I just, are you people here for a particular case?
Uh, 75.
Which one?
75.
75.
Okay.
All right, okay, that will be next. That's the end.
But I just don't understand why, why we're taking a withdrawal of prejudice, why we're just doing now instead of-
Well, we can do it now, but I just thought, when I said hearing, I meant continue it. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in opposition? Close the hearing, and then that's it.
The best reason is, one of Mr. Giusano and Mr. Cole gave, that if it's not clear from the way it was advertised, and what I represented to you doesn't match up to that, then it's hard to figure out what's really before you and that's-
Well, yeah, it's like I said, that's-
That's what I'm saying.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. I'm wondering, there's another two-letter.
Well, yeah, I just want to ask a question first. So, they're going to come back, and then they're going to have two requests in the same petition.
Well, I'm going to ask them about that, because I certainly heard what the boy had to say, but I'm explaining to you how we got there, okay?
Yeah, all right.
But you were talking about two things tonight, you're talking about out in the house, and going and turning a one-family into a two-family.
Yeah, well, it's kind of-
Yeah, that's right.
So, I mean, can you do both of those in the same petition request?
Yes, yes, because it's on the plan. It's on the plan.
Well, except dividing the lot.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, I hear a motion.
But I'm telling you, that's a lot, that's a lot of-
Well, wait a minute.
I'm telling you right now.
Let's, whatever, you know, let's go through it properly, and we'll deal with that later. I don't want to make a motion to withdraw our prejudice.
I make a motion, the petition could draw the-
I have a second. Chair, what's that? Follow along.
Mr. Wood?
Mr. Wood.
Mr. Giusano?
Yes, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, withdraw. Just when the-
I'm trying to-
Okay, next case will be-
Bring him in, brother.
Okay, next case is 75 Lenway. Will you, Mr. Cole, read the-
Sure, 75 Lenway, petitioner Julio Carrera and Jose Reyes, to allow construction of a two-story addition with exterior stairs to an existing three-family structure upon an undersized lot, 3,607 square feet, in zoning District R5. Addition to be constructed upwards upon an existing base that encroaches within minimally required setbacks.
Hi, I'm Julio Carrera. Good evening, board. I'm Julio Carrera.
All right, so hearing, those in favor now open, state your name and address.
I don't know.
Yeah, don't jump through, really. Just wait and listen.
I'm sorry.
Okay, state your name and address again.
Julio Carrera, petitioner.
Petitioner, yeah, okay.
And then, the affected family.
All right, the hearing is now open, for those in favor, now you may make your statement.
Good evening, board. I am the petitioner, and I believe they are the affected family. I've never done this before, so I'm very nervous, and I might break down.
Wait, what did you say about these people that-
They say they're here for 75 Lenway, so I think they're probably neighbors, maybe?
Oh.
They're probably neighbors. Okay, they're affected property.
Who are the owners?
75 Lenway?
That's where you live?
No, I don't live in 75 Lenway. 473 Washington Ave, Chelsea.
Okay, and what is your occupation? What is your occupation?
I work as a real estate agent.
I see, okay. Thank you, you may proceed.
Okay, sir. All right, so, I believe, I just want to state it, that the way it's written there, what I'm requesting, it sounds like I'm requesting to build a two-family, and that is, I approached Mr. Norma Tech on it, and the way it's, the way it's written is probably scaring them. We're not trying to build a two-family. So what I'm trying to do is, we have the stairs in the back of the house, but we share an entrance, like a six-foot entrance on New Hall, at the likes of New Hall, okay? So for that reason, I tried to move it so that everybody can walk without the stairs in the back, so I put them on the side. Where I put in the stairs on the side facing the beach, we did not have one of the corners. On one of the corners, we have eight feet, and the other corner, we don't. That's what we're here for.
All right, listen to his statement first.
That's why I wanna look at the plan, 'cause I'm not.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, you'll get your chance, I guarantee you.
You wanna hear the miss?
Okay, sir, so, sir, we moved the stairs from. We moved the stairs from. The construction of a two-story.
All right. Sir, you're having a floor, it's carrying on a private conversation here.
I am sorry, I'm sorry.
Give, give him the plan.
Back to the side of him.
I'm so sorry.
It should be.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know how to.
Now, let me, let me ask you a question, for you two, sir. The, uh, primary means of egress, is that where the brick stairs is?
The primary means of egress is the front, that's the primary.
The front, where's the secondary, where does it come?
We're, we're asking to move them to the right of the house, as you're facing the house.
Yeah, but listen to me, the primary and the secondary is supposed to be as remote as possible, looks to me like they're gonna be close together.
Front and side, one is in the front, and one, the other one's on the side.
Now, the brick stairs, is that your primary means of egress?
Yes, the, yes. Facing Lenway.
There's no railings on it or nothing?
No, that's on Lenway, that's the primary, is on Lenway.
All right, the secondary is gonna come out.
The second, I'm trying to take away from there.
Facing, facing the Lenway too?
No, sir.
Where's it gonna come out?
Let me show you.
Yeah, just clean it out here.
Right there, was this deck? Right there was this deck. And that deck is existent, have you seen some pictures there?
Okay, now, come here.
Yes.
Yes, where, where are the stairs here in the front?
Front, right in the middle of the house, right in the middle.
No, no, let him explain.
You have the pictures still?
Yeah, I understand, but it, I, it doesn't show here, it don't show stairs here.
Yeah, pictures?
All right. All right about here?
Yes, sir.
No, it isn't, oh, you don't have it on the plan, that, that's why he's getting all the questions.
We paid, uh.
That's why you're getting all the questions.
You're right, we paid Broadplans, a company called Broadplans.
Now, now, we're strictly.
Yep.
You know, I'm trying to speed this up, and we're trying to help you, but.
Thank you.
You're, you're, you're not answering the question. Where, where is this? Is this where the new stairs are?
Yes, sir.
Right in here?
Yes, sir.
And, and they empty out towards Lenway two?
Yes, yes, they will.
So, that's what I'm asking you, they're not remote, and they should be, why can't you walk the back, there's no, because you have a right-of-way there.
It's very, very small, the right-of-way, so when away, I'm trying to.
No, wait a minute. State numbers, don't say very small or very big, how many feet?
Six.
Is that?
Yeah, probably about six feet.
Six feet? So, I mean, that's enough to handle a load of a hundred.
However, I don't, there's sometimes a car parked there, so we believe.
No, wait, yeah, we have to go over this, because this is not a complete plan, I gotta tell you right now.
I, I apologize, but we.
I mean, one of you listen, or I have to stay.
Okay.
We can, you know, you're gonna have to listen one way or the other.
I will.
Or we go to a vote.
Okay, nope, I will.
You get it? I'm, I'm just telling you, in, in the state building code, that the, uh, exits, the egress must be remote, it can be, this doesn't show it. Why can't you walk this way here? Re, reverse the stairs, can you do that?
I will be putting traffic into their property.
You'll be what?
I will be, uh, sending traffic into that alleyway that we share with their property.
Well, see, this is gonna pass muster in front of the building department, too. They go by the same rules.
Mr. Chairman, is there any drawings that we can look at here, is there any, anything that we can see for what we're.
Did you submit, did you submit?
Yeah, the rich, he's got, he's got a copy of the, the stairs here, which is not acceptable, it's not enclosed anyway.
It doesn't work to me.
I know, but nobody.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't work.
Excuse me, this board has been voting on these for years and years, it doesn't matter.
But you're projecting the state building code by saying that?
No.
Yeah, they have.
Let's, let's not have an argument.
I'm not, I just, I always seize the information that we're both on.
Of course, I have my confidence, not approved, that's it. Last case we had, and it was the same. All right.
So here we are.
Anyone have any questions with the petition?
Yeah, I, I just, again, it's sort of, it's sort of been confusing. So, here's, here's your deck, where are the stairs coming down?
To the front, they will go back, yes.
Okay. Yeah, you got eighteen and a half feet, from the base of this to the, the street. But the doors are pretty much in the middle of the house, and it's the second meter egress, so actually in the middle, they're not up front, they're in the middle of the house.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You got more stairs up here?
No, on the side.
No, no, our doors, you go one, two, three?
Yeah.
Over here, we've got one.
Well, they, maybe actually.
Well, yeah, but see, you got, I'm talking about this.
Yeah, that's the side, over here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, over there. It's still a three-family?
Yes, sir. We're not changing the use.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else have any questions?
How come you're doing all this work before you came here?
The contractor didn't know, that, we have a contractor going, and the building department said you need to, they measure the, uh, the distance to the fence, and they say you need to stop work and go to the board, and that's what we're here.
Could you have built the other stairway without, without coming to us? In other words, if you would.
To the back?
Yeah. I'm, I'm just wondering.
Probably, probably, but.
Um, did you put, did you, is this building been sprinkled?
It is going, it is sprinklers are in.
Sprinklers.
Yes, and there will be, everything will be inspected, yes.
But both of these stairs empty out on, on one area?
Yes.
Right, on the Lenway?
Yes, yes. Egress from two different sides of the house.
I know.
Yeah, yes, I am.
If there was a fire in that area, nobody's gonna go anywhere, 'cause they both empty out on the Lenway.
That's why they have to be remote. All right, anyone else have any questions with the petition? All right, thank you. Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else closing out those, in favor of those opposed? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here?
Well, so where, where are the stairs coming out? On the, uh.
We'll get your name and address.
Uh, Steve Finkinbaum, one-ten New Hall Street.
Anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here?
Well, so where, where are the stairs coming out? On the, uh.
We'll get your name and address.
Uh, Steve Finkinbaum, one-ten New Hall Street.
Okay, and, uh, you're close to in the area, are you down at the lower end of the wall?
Yeah.
Yes.
So if that's, if that property is considered the Lenway, we're, we'd be the last property.
Did you go through the wall?
Yes. So where is it for the stairs planning on coming in, on that side?
Okay, could you let me see?
Absolutely, yes.
We just, we're thinking, we didn't have.
Were you?
This is all us.
And you want to?
One-ten New Hall.
What were you gonna say?
Uh, we didn't, we weren't sure if they were gonna bring them off this side, which would've been a problem, because I keep finding, I need to. But I, I think I know, um, where you have your deck.
And that, that's why I met my speaker. Am I allowed to say something?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, are you, are you talking to the board, are you talking to them? Ask the questions to the board, let us answer. What do you ask them, does he have a deck?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure where they were paying on the.
Could you point out on this plan where the deck is gonna be?
The deck is not, the, I'll propose deck is away from you, the reason why I didn't wanna build it.
You can't point where it on.
Yes, the reason why I didn't want this, next to her, is because she had, she parks her car there, and I would be a fire hazard for somebody, you know, she, she doesn't have anywhere to park, so that's why I decided that it is moving to the other side. So now, when I move it to the other side, you're not affected, and I, you know, and I need a, I need a, I need it, yep.
You gotta have it.
Yeah, I gotta have it.
Well, what did you have before this?
Where is it, where is the second egress?
Excellent, when we found the house, it was in the back, and it was empty, your car. Yeah. And this is part of it.
Where were the stairs before, before we did all that?
They were, they were provided their people's.
Yes, and then she parks her car there, but I'm not asking.
They were there.
Don't park, because she doesn't have anywhere to park.
He was doing them by favor.
I'm coming to a right-of-way, so.
Yes, we have a right-of-way.
But your stairs don't want to.
To the front.
Yes, they exist.
I don't know.
How do you do that?
The old ones?
I just, I don't know how anyone would let you put a stairway.
And here?
Yeah.
I know, those existent, and that's why I decided to move it.
It's just that, um, the back of this house is just one step, right, and there's a door.
There's no upstairs, it's just one step.
And my cellar door goes right across from it, so. It's not much of a.
But it's functioning now, it's, it functions now, it's working as it is, it's just would be better if you had that other stairway. But it's, it's like Mr. Count said, but it's a hazard, but two stairs so close together, and they're both coming out at the same point in the house. Twenty-six, I don't understand.
Yeah, I said open, it means it's a little test against snow and ice. I was, I'm guessing, and if it's not enclosed, I'm not voting, I never do, they're too dangerous. And, and we have a right to have that, no matter what this said in the state building code, it any of it means, we can have whatever we want for public safety.
Just a picture of what that driveway that I'm on. That's how close it is, you can see the house.[1565.84]